It being six o'clock, based on the bell across the street, call our meeting to order on April the 10th, 2024. And just for those who may not know, today is the celebration of the end of Ramadan, and we will not have Sarah here tonight as a result of that. And so, we can move on. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. So after the Pledge of Allegiance, we have approval of minutes, town moderator debriefing after annual town meeting, superintendent's report, assistant superintendent, and I think, although we don't see her here yet, she will be here later for a presentation that's part of the agenda, and that's the Finance Committee, excuse me, the Finance and Operations Report. The School Committee member report, citizens' request, the fiscal '24 budget update, voted town meeting article, capital article update, acceptance of a donation, the Asbit Valley Collaborative Annual Report discussion, and accept fiscal year '24 third quarter report. At the end of that will be adjournment. So first thing then is approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes from March 27.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. 4-0-0. Thank you. Hey, young man, how are you?
Not so young, but not bad.
Say that.
So anyway, thanks for seeing me early tonight. Before I start, I just want to give a plug for, as you probably know, this was quite an interesting town meeting season, got a lot of new people, a lot of people were interested in ins and outs, and there was a lot more nuance to the town meeting. So I had taken a break from doing it during COVID, but now that COVID has receded and given the interest and the number of newcomers and the people who are delving into the details of town meeting more, I'm hosting a series of drop-in office hours over at Memorial Hall at Town Hall, including tonight from 7:00 to 8:30, tomorrow from 1:00 to 2:30 in the afternoon, and from Friday from 10:00 to 11:30. So I figure a morning, afternoon, and an evening slot each an hour and a half. No formal agenda. I ask residents or voters who want to give their feedback of what they thought about town meeting, how it could be better, if they didn't go, what would make them go, anything that they think might help our self-governance run better. It's just a drop-in. People can say what they want. I've promised to the Select Board and the Advisory Finance Committee that I'll report back on what I hear after I get some structure, and I just wanted to give a plug for that for anyone watching tonight. So thanks for seeing me early in your meeting so I can get over and unlock Town Hall and do that. So as you know, we had our town meeting on March 23rd. I'll just give you a little bit of a recap, looking at the draft of the town meeting minutes that I'm reviewing that the town clerk has sent me. In the course of the day, we had 683 people check in and get voting devices, which is just under 5% of the voters, which is, which for anything short of the lights at the high school or the library edition is certainly amongst the highest of the consistent turnouts that we've had. And I was pleased to see that throughout the day, we were consistently getting between 400 or 500 people voting. So that was, that was sort of a silver lining to a very busy day. Just to compare it to the election that was held a few weeks before, this draft report I had says that there were, that there are as of March 2nd, the day voting registration closed for the town election and the town meeting, there were 13,745 registered voters in town. So the town election drew 2,872, which is about 20.8%, and our town meeting had just under 5% checking in. So I was pleased with that. I was glad that the voters were able to stick through a long day and, for the most part, keep it very respectful. And I was very grateful that we were able to finish the town meeting in one session.
Yeah.
Because if you would ask me around 2:30 on Saturday afternoon, I thought for sure we were going to be Tuesday night.
Yeah.
So I'll thank for the, I'll thank everyone involved, not only the extensive school staff that helps, Steve Ashley, Steve Masrielli, Amber, everybody. It takes a lot of people to set up the town meeting, to have it run smoothly, and I'll give extra, extra bonus credit to everyone who went through earlier and many pre-town meeting discussions and meetings with me to make sure that we thought about as many possible, you know, options of what could happen and how to do it as possible. So I want to thank you, obviously, for that. So I'm mostly here to get your feedback. I've made it a tradition to go to the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and the Advisory Finance Committee after every town meeting, just to give sort of the major boards in town a chance to give me feedback, though any of you or anyone watching is welcome to go to any of the sessions in the next three days, or if you see this after that, you can send me email at moderator@westboroughma.gov, and I'll add that to the feedback that I'm gathering. So with that said, I'll open it up to you.
Well, I was very interested in the methodology used for the, for the end articles, and was thinking about that. And actually, you know, as a fact that the replay happened, I guess, a number of times on television, I was able to actually compare your seven and a half minutes each side to what the average of every article turned out to be, which is exactly 15 minutes.
Yeah.
On average. Obviously, some ran more and some ran less. So I think that worked out very well.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not here to either defend or to pat myself on the back, but I want to say, I don't know, the Select Board and I got the brunt of emails of people who were very concerned about the fact that there were a number of citizens petitions, you know, essentially almost a quarter or a third of the warrant was that. And I know there were concern, people thinking like, oh, it's going, you know, we're going to spend way too much time. And so I know I came to, I think I came to the Select Board and the Finance, in the Finance Committee, I think I even came here, but it was been a, it has been very busy week. And I think the proposal to limit debate for those kept people's attention focused. It let people from both sides say what they want to say. And as I said sort of before in my little, my little mini lecture between the second to last and the last article, I think it was a very unique opportunity to take some very highly emotional issues in a room of about 400 people. Everybody managed to speak their case. And as, as is the role of town meeting, we came, we spoke, we voted, and I think we held the town together. And that was, that was my main goal, as it is with every town meeting, is to make us feel everybody gets heard, everybody gets to vote, and then we let the votes fall where they may. So.
The only thing I would suggest is that after each side had their first chance to allow anyone who wished to make a motion to end debate, because I think some of it went on longer than it might have if that was, if that rule was in place.
Yeah. Well, I'll just tell you, the rationale for that is that my belief is that as a legislative body, and I was asked this, if not at the meeting, before the meeting, like, why can't we just hear the motion and then go directly to vote on it? My philosophy of town meeting is that the town meeting is deliberately set up as a deliberatively, deliberative body. Apologize for using the word deliberate twice in there. And so I didn't think it was, I thought that by having the motion that I presented earlier as a rule of the meeting to limit debate to 15 minutes with seven and a half minutes per side, it would be adequate to essentially say, if we can just keep it to that, and that way it was most, most that. And I think what we noticed was, by the time we'd been through probably nine or 10 of them, someone finally made the statement to say, if we don't have much else to say and want to vote, we can just not raise our hands and want to speak. I don't think it's my role to encourage the voters not to speak if they want to, because I don't want to be encouraged, anyone to think that I'm taking sides. And so I didn't think it would be appropriate to have a motion to terminate debate either after the main motion or the first, the first speaker, because in many cases, the first speaker had, the people, just as they do for presentations, they tell me in advance that they'd like to make a presentation. And I thought that voters that didn't have that opportunity should be given an opportunity to speak. But, but we live and learn. I'll take that under consideration.
I'm just suggesting, you know, when each side has had their chance, you know, whether it's the second time or the third time, whatever.
Right. Yeah. Yes, perhaps if we've exhausted one side of people who want to speak, then maybe it would be appropriate to allow that. So yes, I'll certainly think about that. That's, it's a good point that once one side's exhausted the people who want to speak, maybe there is no need to hear more from the side that does want to speak. So, thanks. That's a good observation.
I have a few questions. First of all, I thought the meeting went very well, considering the number of articles. And I thought it was a good idea, I don't know where it originated, to have some of the presentation not be shown unless there was a discussion.
We did that 20 years ago.
That was a good idea. I thought that was.
It's an evolutionary thing, where I think other people just say, like, let's just put, tell your little story, and then if there isn't a need, and I think especially with the DPW thing, sometimes those are so dense and so much in there.
Yes, yes. I like that. So I had a lot of conversations with different residents, and most people were most, you know, were emotional about the citizen petition. So I have a few questions. So is it the case that the minimum number of signatures required to include an article as a citizen petition is only numbered, only 10 votes?
For an annual town meeting, the state law says 10 votes. For a special town meeting that the Select Board is already calling, it's 100 votes. And 200 voters can make the Select Board have a town meeting, whether the Select Board wants to or not. So that's what the state law says in terms of town meetings. Now, what's come up is that I've had conversations with the Select Board with this, and one of the Select Board members has approached one of our state senator to do some research into this. And based on an email I got yesterday that were, that I'm going to follow up on, and I'm sure they will too, there seem to be some towns that have been able to get a, essentially a bylaw to change that. And I don't know, I mean, my understanding was that, without going through a whole home rule petition, you know, very lengthy process, that you, that the town's bylaws couldn't override state law. But this particular early email in the, in the chain of asking questions seemed to indicate that maybe two or three towns have done that. So I was going to follow up on that to see, and I think the Select Board is going to be following up as well.
Okay. I think that would be, that would be great if we increase it. I mean, in this case, if we increased it to 30 signatures, I think.
Yeah.
That could have been enough.
I think what I heard is that at least one town, and I don't want to say what it is in case I'm remembering wrong, because I don't have it right on my laptop with me. I think at least one town made it 50 signatures, which is the same as you need to get your name on a ballot.
Correct.
But again, I don't, I don't know exactly what the process was, but I'm going to look into that. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Or another idea that I had was can we bundle petitions that are originating from the same author?
Yeah, this question was asked beforehand. I think it was actually asked at the meeting as well. So there were, there were people who said, like, given that we have, you know, like 13 non-binding petitions, can we do them like we do with some of the capital, who have A, B, C, D, and E? And my response to that was, first of all, A, the petitions were actually all signed by different people. It was a lot of overlap, but not all the same. And then even the Select Board felt that they had the authority to bundle them. They're not all exactly on the same topic, so I feel that for me to handle it fairly, I would have done it as we do with capitals, say, A, B, C, D, and E, and like the budget, and people questioned them.
Right.
And I felt relatively assured that even if we did that, they, each one would have been questioned, and we would have wasted five or 10 minutes of me reading from each one, only to have them each questioned. So it was a judgment call that I felt that even if, even if I felt structurally or procedurally we could do that, it was unclear to me that it would actually save time, and I decided to just go with the basis of, once we'd established the 15-minute, seven-and-a-half-minute aside round rule, and I would just see how it went. And I think it went okay, but I, but there's no, there's no permanent fixed way we're going to do these things. I'm going to continue to think about what worked, what didn't work, and I'm always trying to make it better. So.
I mean, I'm not surprised. You really thought about all these questions many times, but maybe somebody else will benefit from listening to the answers as well. So last question would be, can, can we request that these citizen petitions are actionable? That there is actually, you know.
That there's something the town meetings take action on?
Right.
Yeah, that was something that the Select Board had at a meeting that I was at, the Select Board actually, when the Select Board was going to close, I think it was the night they closed the warrant, they had town council on. And town council's opinion at the time was that because the wording of the statute is that for a town meeting, once you get the number of signatures, it can put subjects on the warrant, it just says subjects. It doesn't say anything about subjects for which the town has authority to act. At the time, the town council thought that it would not be appropriate for the Select Board to not put them on the warrant. So again, we're all learning. I think everybody's going to find if, are there other precedents? Are there other towns that do it differently, or why not? And again, at the end of the day, I'm just thankful that although there were a number of them, although they were highly charged and highly emotional, I was very proud of the fact that 400-plus voters sat and listened and voted and didn't turn into a circus, that many people had told me for sure they were positive it was going to be.
I agree.
And I was very thankful to everyone for making sure that wasn't the case. So worst case, people may have spent, spent two extra hours in the high school auditorium that they didn't want to, but at the end of the day, I think it certainly was a success based on what it could have been.
I agree 100%. Yes. Okay. That's all from me. Thank you very much.
I don't have any questions. I would like to applaud you for handling well a very charged town meeting. You know, I went into it not knowing really what to expect, but I think your decision to limit the debate to seven and a half minutes per side was a wise one. And I was one of the ones who asked about whether or not a motion could be passed to vote on the citizen's petitions.
Oh, that's right.
As a block.
Yeah.
And, you know, your answer is what you gave here, that, you know, they're very distinct articles. And so I, you know, I think that's the right decision that you made. So, so kudos.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, as you, regardless of citizen's petitions or not, it's always a balancing act. My job is to essentially be the chief parliamentarian and to help the voters figure out how to navigate a legislative process for which hardly anyone has lots of expertise at. And so I'm always trying to, sometimes I err on the side of helping the voters too much. Sometimes I err maybe the other way, but I'm always trying to at least explain why we're doing it the way we are. I try to have sessions like this to give feedback, and the feedback has led to changes. We start, we have the traffic light, you know, this year, you know, we did that. So, so thanks. And I always do try to understand my, I always do try to understand my rationale, even if people think it's wrong, because a few days later, somebody might say, like, oh, you know, I thought about that some morning, here's this. And many times, there's things I didn't think about. So.
Speaking of the traffic light in the mirror.
Yeah. I'm not sure if many people used it. One or two people did, but I'm going to keep trying.
I never noticed it when I was, when I was speaking from the podium, because, you know, I mean, you're delivering to the, to the hall.
Yeah.
And so I guess to the extent it could be put up on, you know, on the podium itself or something like that.
Yeah, I'm going to keep working on it. It was, it was an idea that I think works for.
It was a good idea. It's just, I never looked at it.
Works for a few people, but as you say, when you're in, when you're in the midst of public speaking, which many of us don't really enjoy, remembering to look for it. And I was actually trying to figure out, how can I angle it so people of various heights and where they stand might see it? I'm going to keep working on it. So.
That's good. Tim?
My questions were already addressed. I would just like to say, I thought that the citizen's petitions were handled incredibly well. I do appreciate all the thought and work that goes into town meeting. So I'd just like to say thank you for your service to the community. Thanks.
I was going to say, John, I think the traffic light was effective. I do think getting a second one, if it isn't too complex, would be helpful, and it could go, you know, somewhere that they can see it. But usually, you know, maybe, maybe Mark could cue the person and just you give him a red, yellow, and green.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe he can watch.
Because he's right there, he just hold up a red.
Yeah, I guess if he had red, yellow, and green cards, then he could hold up, yeah.
Just give him three little circles, and he can hold it up when the light changes, and they'll see it.
Yeah, okay. That's a good idea, yeah.
You know, keep it simple, because they don't have to coordinate two different timed things. So I liked that. I thought one of the changes that was interesting, that took a little time to iron out, was your selection to not totally have certain people, people at the podium. And I'm so reflecting on that, and I think it was effective. And I have to think about playing out the different types of presenters. And I wonder if we want to provide maybe a standing mic where they could be over.
Yeah.
To the side, you know, not, because if you're looking at their presentation, but we force them to the back, although a couple of them came down, you know, want to be respectful to the fact that they've presented an article, whether I agree with it or not, and that they need to be able to speak in a way where they can present well.
Right, yeah.
And so I think there were some awkward moments for those people as they were trying to figure out where they were going to present from. And whoever it's going to be in the future, it might be good to establish, you know, a chair and a mic there where they could come down and sit, and then a respect to the presentation.
Yeah. Yeah, that was something that I hadn't announced in advance. I just, it was one part of my own thinking, and I never really talked about it. And then I'm also reflecting on how to make it better, too. Because I do agree, the ability to make eye contact and to see the room makes a big difference.
Yes.
And so I think having some way for, for sort of an official, this is the government speaking, and then somewhere for the voters to do it, but both down front, but still maintain that subtle, though I think what I've been told in other towns is the best practice, that subtle but important, sort of visual of like, who's speaking now?
Right.
Is it somebody who's, who's a voter or legislator, or is it somebody representing a body? And so, yeah, that's a good point about having an extra standing mic, my on-the-fly, just telling people they could take the holding mic and stand down there. But yeah, keep working on that.
Right, right. But I think, you know, again, you guys do a good job to just reflect on it, refine it. So I think there's something to be done there, and I think there's, you know, something that would be cleaner, and I think it's good. I agreed on the timing for the non-binding positions to keep them framed well. And I think we always struggle a little bit with the heavily dominant voices of people who want to present over and over and over again. And I think you managed it as allowable and kept track well over a long time meeting. So I thought that that was really well done. I don't think you've got much more you have to refine. I mean, I think we've established a stronger babysitting model. I think that's done more smoothly.
Yeah.
I like the way we ironed that. I think that lunch edition has helped people. So I do think my one thing is, if you are going to do those open sessions, if you email those to my assistant.
Okay.
We'll push it out to all the families.
Okay, all right.
Because you'll reach a lot of people that you're hosting those. So I think they're valuable, and I think the opportunity for people to learn.
To wait for the one tonight, but there are Thursday and Friday, so I'll try to mail it.
You send it to me and we'll.
I'll send it to you tonight, and you can send it.
Push it out and see if you get some families.
Whatever the backpack.
So in the future, whenever you're trying to do something for town business.
Okay.
If you send it to the superintendent's assistant, they'll push that for you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. And, you know, Westboro Connects will also post that for you. And you can put a blurb about training people for town meeting, and that, I think their current readership is very high. So both of those forums will help you reach the community.
Great. Thank you.
So I thought it was great. Thank you.
And thank you also for the, we, I think you started superintendent when I first got elected.
Yeah, 10 years, yeah.
So I think, I think you and I started about the same time. So it's been a fun 10 years, and enjoy your next adventure.
Yeah, thank you.
Daniel?
Everything has already been said that I would have said. Thank you.
Halle, nice to see you again. Did you, did you get to go or watch any of the town meeting?
I did not. I was, it's my first town meeting where I could vote, but I got stuck in Toronto, so I couldn't go.
Okay, all right. All right. Well, if you watch it on TV and see how it goes, I'm curious to know how a new voter sort of absorbs the whole thing. So.
Thank you very much.
I remember my first time, too, and of course, I was, I was brave enough that I sat in the third row and asked questions. And Police Chief Gordon, I think, has forgiven me for asking my questions.
We did have young people there. It was really good.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. It was very good. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Well, thank you. Well, thanks again.
Thank you for coming.
Yep. See you next time.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Thank you. So we are heading into vacation week. I just want to note that as of Friday, it will be the end of school for students for the week ahead. After we return from April break, there's always an energy and intensity shift as people can see the close of the year. And for teachers, it tends to be, you know, the next couple of weeks of framing all the things they need to cover and finish between now and the close of the year. We had a very stable winter, which feels really good. I think teachers felt that they were able to cover content effectively without too many interruptions, and the rhythm of the year has continued to be very, very productive. I feel gratified for that. It's always good for students and families, as well as for faculty. They are going to get a week to relax and regroup, and then we come back and we're spring right down to the close. It's then a quick eight weeks to graduation. Halle will graduate, and we'll bring a new member on board. So it's going to be a very busy, busy spring. Tonight, what I want to. Tonight, what I wanted to do was just speak briefly about, for the record, I shared with you, hello, I shared with you a letter to our representatives, our state representatives, regarding a request that they continue to carefully review the funding formula and the allocations shared for Westboro. I think it's a supportive letter, and they, the Select Board voted to support it, and Christie Williams, the town manager, asked that I bring it before you, and that the chair discuss your interest in signing it as well, because I think it speaks to Chapter 70 funding, and the request that they continue to make sure that Westboro is getting a strong, fair share allocation. And so, I encourage you to sign it. I will sign it, and I created a signature page. If you vote to participate in that, Select Board have approved it, they're waiting for your signature, and we would send them in in partnership. So, I would turn it over to the chair for any discussion and see if, if there isn't too much, we would move to sign that and give our lending support to the Select Board's letter.
I believe every member of the school committee has had a chance to read this letter, and as a result, I would suggest and make a motion that we approve on behalf of Christie Williams, that in fact, the school committee supports her letter, and as a result of potential positive vote that we sign the document to support that. Is there a motion?
I move that we, on behalf of Christie Williams, that we support the letter that she's presented us.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion? Short and sweet. All those in favor? Aye? 4-0-0.
Perfect. I will say that, so if you pass that around for signatures, that will be helpful. I saw, I'm trying to see if I can find it, I saw a good news, state budget news. The House Ways and Means Committee just released its budget proposal, and the House has proposed $190 million for school lunch meals for all moving forward. That is actually 20 million more than Governor Healy had proposed, I think that's very interesting. So, I think the sustaining of the school lunch, free school lunch for all has had very positive effects across districts, and it's good to see that level of support. So, maybe they're feeling as strongly towards the other aspect of the budget, and we want to get the things in soon. So, that is good news as well. And that is my report for tonight.
Daniel?
Just a quick report about Monday and the eclipse. You may not know that we provided the glasses for all the students. Some of the parent groups did it at a few buildings, but we made sure that all the students had them. It was a, it was a, you know, much anticipated day everywhere in the country, as you know. And so, we talked about it in the classroom, and, you know, explained what was going on. But as you know, the eclipse itself was happening after dismissal. But we wanted to make sure that everyone knew how to be safe, and we put out communication to the parents. So, we enjoyed the day, just like, you know, everybody else.
I got this really cute video from two Fails teachers, and they had on these headbands, and one was the sun, and one was the moon, and they were basically enacting like how the moon was going to go in front of the sun. And it was just these very cute little spontaneous, energizing, positive, and really enjoyable celebrations. So, it was really good.
That's it.
Need a? Just in time, nothing, huh? Okay, I have a couple of things I'd like to ask of the superintendent. And one is, we've seen on the news these days that in fact, the kid taking the MCAS had his computer, in effect, explode while he was taking the test. And I'm sure that people out there are wondering about what our, how our system works, and what we, how we deal with potential issues like that. Amber?
Sure, so the tech team is very strong, and they have a regular rotation where we collect all of our laptops, and the ones that fall into the range of, the ones that we lend across district, they check and rotate them regularly, they swap out batteries for new ones as needed. If there's any faulty indication on any of our computers, we pull them immediately. We also have a protocol where, if you have, and this has occurred in the past, one at Gibbons, where a computer started smoking when somebody stuck a paperclip in one of the outlets. So, there is a protocol that we've developed where, you know, there's an immediate call to the office, the teacher clears the room, and we collect that computer and attend to it. It goes outside immediately, and then we basically return the computer to the company with a, with an explanation and an assessment. So, we have had, you know, I think, two experiences in my time here where a laptop smoked, one student-induced and one, I don't know if it was or not, student-induced been so long. But we do have a very nice emergency protocol for it, but it really is about the care, rotation, and checking of all your laptops, and that is done regularly in the summer work session. And I feel like we have a very healthy and safe protocol, both if something happened, and for our regular checking and maintenance.
Very good, I'm sure that's reassuring to every parent out there with a child that has one of these things. The second question that I have and request comes from the selectmen's meeting last night in regards to the proposal for development of additional residences in town, which will be under the auspices of the planning board. And eventually, I guess, we will also get to see the plans and comment. But my point in bringing this up is that one of the things, of course, with residential development is how many children will it produce for the, for the school system? And secondarily, you know, whether or not the statistics that are being used by the planning board in reviewing it are actually our experience in Westboro. So, what I will ask is that we try to create, because I think we have the data, how many students are being generated in the various types of residences in town, and that that information be provided to the planning board for their use in how they evaluate the project.
So, I interacted with a Select Board member who called me with questions, wondering if I knew of the development. I do get, so that development is a discussion taking place for, over at Home Goods, that stretch of the section where Home Goods was all the way down, that whole mall area, to create 130 dwelling units there. One and two-bedroom apartments, condos, apartments, I'm not sure which it is, might be a combination. I think, and also a percentage, I think, 20 or 25% affordable. You know, that aside, I explained to the Select Board member that it was not in our current count. And at the time when we did our enrollment study 10 years ago, it's held up exceptionally well for us. It has tracked out almost, you know, as we anticipated. But that was not carried in it. We had carried the development of houses that went out by Grafton, where they brought that development in, actually out by U. Was counted in the original, but this is not. Either the, also, there's another small development over off of Otis, I think some microhouses that they're looking at doing, and those are not counted. So, given both of those, Mr. Durrett, I believe that the proper action would probably be to organize another enrollment study. I don't know that we need the extension of what we did the first time, when we formed a committee and did the study, but we need to do an impact study of potential housing again, and make sure that the formula is holding. And I think we used, wasn't it like 1.5 kids per unit? It might have been 2.5, because they were heavy. I'll pull the report and look, but I think the actionable items would be to set up a working meeting with the planning board and refresh them on the structure of the memory of it, and discuss possibly even a joint one. I mean, I think we need to be very careful that they are assessing that, because 130 units, those kids are going to dump right into the system. And you also then add, in addition to that, the concerns around just the increase related to the shelter-based housing, which is also not counted, and has brought in, I think, 44 kids. You know, it starts to impact where we are. So, why don't you and I have an independent session on that and bring back an actionable item, and look at the research you and I did before, we can pull that report, maybe review it, the enrollment study, and see the piece we would want to do, and whether or not we would want to work to request one, I mean, NEASC does them for free, well, minimal cost. So, we should talk about it and maybe come back or request a meeting with the planning board.
That's fine, yeah, I just want us to, that is, the school committee, to provide any data that we have that would be useful in this evaluation.
I think we should put together a memo, we could put together a memo indicating to the planning board that we want to flag that this was not carried in the enrollment study when we built. And I think we need to look, again, like, it's, we need to look at capacity for getting work done. We can name what has to be done, we have to look at capacity for accomplishing it, we're moving to the close of the year. But you need to look at a classroom study of how much space we have for build-out, and we don't have much. So, it is, it is certainly involves a composite of work. It's not staggering, but there is a smart composite that we did the first time. I don't know that we would ask for proposals for, you know, for construction. I think we would just do the school assessment of space and the formula for the town assessment of what's possible. I will review it, but maybe you and I have a meeting, we decide what we do.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as, you know, the school committee and school system participates in this evaluation, I think it's important for the town to recognize that we also have input to such things, particularly if it turns out to be that we need more space, or that the impact of it is increased population in each grade, in a classroom.
It's going to be more staffing.
Yeah, and staffing.
And again, staffing is proportional to the needs of a community. So, you know, if you bring in 100 kids, you know, 15 or 16% of them are going to be special education, 20 to 25% of them are going to have L-needs. Like, there's, they frame statistically, so all of those require increased service. You know, we've been in a quiet phase in terms of staffing growth. That feels like how we felt, you know, in 2017 and 18, where we were every year building forward, both physically building and structurally bringing in new people. I think that there's a conversation, it's not ours to have, but certainly to participate in, that the planning board needs to be asked what their long, what their larger, what their larger vision is, or the Select Board. We need to look at the master plan, like, were we looking to continue to increase housing in the town? Because you're then also increasing traffic, you're increasing all the demands of police and fire, and just the congestion of the community. And you know that site, you can imagine 100-plus residents coming in and out of there every day onto Lyman Street is certainly an interesting proposal. And there are many communities that also then set limitations, and I'm always curious why they set some limitations that we aren't, you know, either choose not to. I'm not sure what our, I mean, you've sat on the planning board, so you know, but. So, it's an interesting time to see it circle back after 10 years, and I think the town should be cautious, so.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Sure. If these units were built, would these kids be going to Hastings?
We would have to redistrict.
Yeah, you'd have to spread it out in whatever resources we have.
We would have to do redistricting. So, we carried redistricting in the strategic plan when we were putting Fails in, and made the decision that Fails outgrowth was going to happen with the, with the new development that came in that opened through Grafton, as well as the fact that we were spreading shelter residents around, and that they had the Mount Pleasant build-out, which, the development off of Mount Pleasant, which is going to end up being like 27 houses, I think, and that's two kids per house, is the average you use. So, Fails is going to be full. So, we built Fails with two additional classrooms, I think two or four, I have to look back at the study. I'm just closing out and not having to think about that, so opening it up is really hard for me. But I do think, before, you know, I step away, because I have a lot of the history on that, we should maybe sit down and organize a memo from the school committee to the Select Board and to the planning board regarding the caution of their building profiles.
No, not, no. Tim?
No comments at this time.
So, I would, I would support what you suggest, that we could sit down together, discuss what we know and what we need to know, and where do we get the information, so.
Right, we know the mechanism of what we have to do. It's a collaborative, focused, written, documented move forward. And we have to put it in print, we can't just talk about it, we got to get in in a memo, we got to go speak to them and get on their agenda. And that's how we mobilized before with clarity, and we did the joint, we did a joint enrollment assessment, where we had planning board and Select Board and school committee together, shared document. And I think we should request a shared process, because then abstractly somehow, like, we own that enrollment, like, we were asking for it. So, if you're at a joint process and you've got a Select Board member and the town manager and the planning board director, everybody has to own this building they're doing, so.
Very good.
All right, we'll just do, I'll jot a little timeline and start to think about what we would need to accomplish, Steve, to leave it in solid footing moving into, you know, the end of the year.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda is school committee member reports. Tim?
Nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Hallie?
So, the spring sports are in full gear, we're having track meets, lacrosse games, baseball games, it's all. We've had multiple matches this whole week. And Best Buddies is hosting an inclusion week at the high school to talk about the importance of inclusion.
Kaku?
No updates necessarily, I just want to say thank you on behalf of my children for the schools to distribute those glasses for the solar eclipse. I thought it was brilliant. I was actually stuck behind the bus when the kids were going home, and I watched probably 10 kids get off the bus, and as soon as they got off, immediately look up in the sky. I mean, you could tell they were so excited to, you know, to use it, then my own kids at home were using it. I thought it was, it was great, because this was an event that was nationwide, nationwide for sure, it was broadcasted, so they felt connected to that in a way, so I thought it was great, thank you.
I have nothing to report tonight.
And I've already done my thing, so we'll move on. The next discussion is citizens' requests, do we have any takers? Okay, would you please read our rules?
Before we begin, we will remind everyone of the school committee's policy regarding citizens' requests. You must be a current resident of Westboro. Speakers are allowed to address the school committee about issues within the school committee's purview. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. You're welcome to hand the chair additional comments in writing now, or send them via email, and the chair will share them with the other school committee members. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise during or following a speaker is not allowed. At the close of citizens' requests, school administrators may address what was shared by the speakers if they wish to do so. And remember to state your full name and street address, and speak directly into the microphone.
Great, I'm Joe Considine, I'm 10 Smith Street. I am following up on the return on investment analysis on the millions spent a few years ago for solar panels and geothermal heating at Fails as part of the new building project that Stephen prepared at my request. It is very relevant to compare the net costs and benefits of this option versus the prior option without these additional features. I object to your use of a net present value over 50 years for this analysis, as that is dependent on the accuracy of the cost data 50 years from the opening of the school. Do you really think you can? Do you really think you can accurately estimate the price of electricity fifty years from now? A better metric is break-even point. That's the number of years for the town to recoup the upfront investment of this option. Using the data you supplied me, this comes out to twenty-seven years from when the school is open or year twenty forty-eight. If the towns had multiple green projects to consider, each of which had a break-even point of two or three years and had to choose between them NPV over five or ten years, may be helpful, but not fifty years. Ignoring the break-even point and instead using the fifty-year NPV metric as you did at town meeting is at the very least confusing to the voters and perhaps worse. I argue as a concerned citizen that this was not a wise investment and hope that our town leaders will not bring forward such expensive but largely symbolic projects in the future. I am favor, I am in favor of green projects with a break-even point of two or three years, but not twenty-seven. Remember, the alternative could have been to buy mostly green power from National Grid. I come here today because I was moved by the voter who spoke at town meeting of people having to move out of Westboro because our taxes have gone up much faster than our neighboring towns over the past few years. I am concerned that, about, I'm concerned by voters who are relying on our food pantry, including some former middle-class because they can't afford groceries. Food pantry customers are up eighty-five percent from last year. Our taxes are now fourteen percent higher than Southboro, which is not a poor town, and twenty-eight percent higher than Shrewsbury. My conscience won't allow me to remain quiet. If you consider electric school buses or other green projects, I ask that you use an ROI analysis with break-even point and not a fifty-year NPV to evaluate those projects in the future. I kindly ask that if you're going to refute my analysis in this meeting, that I be given a chance for a short rebuttal. Thank you so much.
All right.
Well, I think I'll say this. First of all, when you have a project and you know the costs, you can do a net present value. Since the state told us that the school's viability is fifty years, it's a fifty-year life. What you suggest for decisions going forward is ROI. And ROI is a proper use of comparing what you know of different options. They aren't the same. They're totally different. And in fact, if one has, you know, let's say, five different options to consider and you have the data that you have in each option, and return on investment is in fact the proper analysis. When a project is done, the net present value tells you what you think the project was worth after decision was made from what you chose. And therefore, a net present value analysis is correct. In finality, you might forget that in fact all this information was presented to the town meeting, whenever it was, two thousand seventeen, I think. And the town meeting was given these options. And in fact, there was a report, which you have seen, of the ROI that was done by our engineer at the time. Besides that, the town has the information associated with the benefits of a geothermal system, which is installed at Hastings. And over the years, it has proved out to be the same. Now, you've made this statement a number of times, and I think as far as any presentation going forward about what your will is, present it to the people that decide, which is not us, it's the town meeting. And that's where it should lie. So, you're welcome to make any argument you like to the people that decide how to spend money. Thank you.
So, you're saying a fifty-year NPV is more valid than a, than a break-even point that says twenty-seven years? I want you to go on record for that.
Well, what I really want to say is that you realize that our bonds, excuse me, that we have to pay off lasts twenty years. And in fact, until you pay those bond off, you will not get a payback, positive payback.
I think you're continuing to confuse the voters. Thank you very much.
So, this will be the last time I'll speak on this issue. Town meeting, I think, decided. Okay, what's next?
Mr. Chair, we're moving forward. The budget update tonight and an update on town warrant articles and our progress since the vote. So, Anita is joining us and together she and I, she's carrying the weight of it. She's going to walk you through the current drawdown on our budget and give you information moving towards appropriate close of FY twenty-four.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. This must be everyone's favorite time to talk about money and budget, see how we are this time of year. We are approximately eleven weeks out for the end of the fiscal year and we're looking that we are in very good shape. Although we closely monitor the budget throughout the year, after April break is really the real start of when we start to do the end-of-year budget work for the finance office. So, this is when we're going to really start to get busy. Looking at the accounts going down, number one, going through payroll, we had approximated around eight hundred thousand dollar shortfall. So, we're looking slightly better than that. And that was for, there was contracts that were not completed.
Prior to the budget vote?
Correct. Last fiscal year. The six schools, we have, we gave them a target amount to hold back on their spending and we are on track for doing that as well, if you go down those. There are, for technology, fine arts, curriculum, those accounts are slightly in the deficit due to just simple, like, cost of software and goods. And for fine arts in particular, we did replace two aging instruments recently, which was around sixty-five, sixty-six hundred dollars.
They're very expensive.
They are really expensive. The forty thousand dollar surplus that is located, is within district-wide. We have a school lunch account that is appropriated forty thousand dollars. That's for any expenditures that are not able to be made out of the school lunch revolving account. And these days, you can basically pay the majority of everything out of the hot lunch account. So, we haven't even touched that money yet and we're not anticipating using that money either.
Yeah, so we held that this year so that we could put it against the deficit. In other years, we have used it effectively to pay for the beginning of the year luncheon for faculty, which is, you know, an important part that some of the, we host the milestone ceremony. Like, those are appropriate to come out of there if we are hosting an event, so some of those. And then we also carry that to pay off some of the deficits at some of the years, maybe in the school lunch account. So, you remember that the state changed the funding mechanism for free lunch, I mean, before free lunch a couple of years ago, where we had to pay the deficit off at the end of the year? And so, that's when we established holding that amount. So, this year, we held it. Not sure what they would do with free lunch if we were going to end up picking up the deficit because there are still some deficits in the accounts beyond the free lunch. So, that's what that's used for. This year, we kind of froze it so we could use it to help us offset the deficit. Back to you.
Okay. Four hundred thousand within special education. That is the four hundred thousand that is appropriated for tuition costs that are unanticipated. So, we're holding on to that right now. Circuit breaker, we had, we have one point eight million dollars. We have utilized four hundred and eighty-four thousand and another four hundred thousand is encumbered in a PO. So, we will have another nine hundred and seventy-four thousand that we plan on transferring in to the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. Transportation services. Right now, we are, we are showing a surplus, but that's only because we're still negotiating our invoices for regular transportation. We are still going back and forth between our transportation company and our legal counsel. So, that's still ongoing. And then within our facilities line, currently, we are holding on to POs for utilities. We normally don't decrease any POs for utilities until we get all of the winter invoices, which should come out in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll be decreasing those amounts as well. So, right now, it's showing we have a negative twenty-five thousand. Very happy that it's not any more than that. We are doing very well this very time.
After looking at ten years of budgets, you know, I think this one is running tight as we knew it would. I just want to, you know, again, the salary deficit, we've called out. We knew we were going to see that. You could kind of see it there transparently, but we've managed to carve out the offsets. And I think that the facilities, I'd like, I'd like their mid-year track to be tighter than it is. They encumber a lot of funds for contracts like, like Sawmill for all the landscape work. They have a lot of fuel encumbered, utilities. And last year, those were running so high, they upped those encumbrances. But I've asked Anita, just that we continue to make sure that we can pull down those accounts in quarterly. So, I mean, they just think it's a pain to have to go back and open another PO. But we just want to pace their budget aligning a little more tightly to what we're actually giving them. So, I think this rides out well. I know that by the time we close out encumbrances, we'll be fine. So, I'll open it up to discussion and questions.
So far, so good, I guess.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay. Very good. So, the next item on the agenda is the articles, or positive votes on the articles for capital improvements are underway. And I asked Anita to comment on what's going on with them and, you know, when, when we think we'll be able to move forward.
Yeah. So, right now, we are working with our attorney on contract language for the Hastings Roof Project and our Hastings ADA project. We should have the contracts done within the next week or two. And then I'll forward them to you for review and for signature. Also, for OPM services, we did narrow down and we have, we chose one vendor. We are going through a walkthrough with them next Wednesday during the day at the school and then we'll be ready to sign as well. It's going to be one OPM to look over both the projects.
And I understand you were able to pick that, that company off of the state bid process so that we don't have to develop all kinds of paperwork?
Correct. Yes.
I think it's also very advantageous that we've been able to have one OPM for both projects in coordination because the ADA one will scope over two years. And Kelly's done a really good job to get that accomplished. And I think, and I think she even said she had the contract back as of tonight on the Hastings Roof. So, you know, we're moving along quickly. And then the ADA one, like she said, we're expecting, which feels really good. So, when we look at just the Hastings project as a package, OPM, almost there, one OPM for both, contract completed on the roof and the ADA coming. So, pretty good, pretty good pacing for getting those projects started.
High school roof designs. Right now, we're just awaiting proposal from, for the cost of the three designs from GGD Consulting Engineers. We're hoping to get that back soon. And last, our Mill Pond Roof Restoration was passed over at town meeting.
I think it'll be important to pull that forward for next year. It'll be in the capital notes and that's one of the advantages of the way we're tracking now. And I think you'll be able to make a decision if that comes in next year. If the high school roof comes in the following year, you guys are just going to have to continue to pace it out. You know, if we end up having to deal with more enrollment crisis, you know, this kind of stuff starts getting shoved to the side. So, I think we just have to really focus on getting these done and moved forward. I think we're in pretty good shape. And remember, the high school roof, we, when we figure out the design costs there, it's three different projects. So, by the time we put that out to bid, it'll be interesting to see the way that works. But the design can be done by one, so it should be good.
As you all, members of the school committee, recall Amber's notes for our meeting tonight, following up on the discussion we had at the last meeting in regards to having a internal committee to, in effect, review and respond to the needs of these projects. Amber had a list of candidates and I would certainly want to serve on that committee, which means that we would then have one open slot for a member of the committee. And I think at the end of the last meeting, both Tim and Jakub had an interest. And so, obviously, either one of you would be a great addition to the committee. How would you like to resolve this?
I think I have fewer assignments. If you're okay, I'll, I would move to this subcommittee.
I'd be happy to be on the subcommittee, but I am okay with that. So, yes, yeah, Jakub, if you would like to serve.
Yeah, just to remind everybody, the reason why we only have two members of the school committee on any internal or external committee is that three would be a quorum. And so, any decision or discussion that would be had at any of these meetings and therefore be potentially created in minutes would be binding. And so, that's the only, that's the reason why we only have two on any of the committees or assignments that we have.
And so, yeah, I agree with you. I mean, if you have two of you and Anita to help track funding, this follows the package of really what was formulated at town meeting. This is more a oversight committee. And so, Julia DeGoddish, when she returns from maternity leave, should sit on that. Kelly GiCapello, superintendent, Allison Borch, Borch's, and probably rotate in the head custodian as needed because they're often the people on the ground first thing in the morning. And all the work people are kind of connecting through them. And so, I think to discuss that, to figure out how to do that, we can talk with Kelly and figure out the balance of that. But I think that would be a workable committee for you.
I agree. And so, to the extent that we need to vote for this, I don't know that we do. But all those in favor of the membership? You can vote too. You did. All right. Four zero zero. So, we're good to go on that.
All right.
The next item on the agenda are the two collaboratives, ABC and Accept.
Okay, okay. Actually, okay, there's that and then the acceptance of donation. Can we back up one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I wanted to bring to you a donation, a grant that was made. Let me just open it up here. Sorry, I just have to get it open myself. Mark Fiderich Foundation and they, at different times, have offered grant support. And Levi has, Levi, our interim, our acting athletic director, has stayed in relationship with this group. And they very generously, we asked for, I think, a thousand and they very generously approved twenty-five hundred, a grant of twenty-five hundred dollars, which will generously cover the support of our unified track. And that's just really nice news to see, especially the week where this week, we're doing inclusion kind of support this week. It's really great to see the type of support that we get from these different organizations. So, I would ask that you approve the grant reception of twenty-five hundred dollars from Mark Fiderich Foundation for the support of the unified track.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
So moved. I would like the motion to include the language of, with gratitude from the school committee for their grant and gift. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you. That's really a nice, nice to get.
So, the vote is four zero zero. Thank you. Now, we can talk about the collaboratives.
We can. So, we are members of two vibrant collaboratives that cover different aspects of our region. And I shared with you Asset Valley's annual report as an update to the work they're doing. And I think it's nice, typically you peruse those independently so that we can just acknowledge that we've received them and that you feel update on, updated on the work of the collaborative. It's interesting because I believe it's important to have them on the public record. Some, I was talking to some colleagues who forward it kind of for review, but don't include a moment to speak about it. And I think, you know, the collaboratives serve us. I think it's good for the community to understand how they work. They provide a range of services. We're in contract with ABC for our van services. how they work. They provide a range of services. We're in contract with ABC for our van services of transportation of special needs students. And we're in some shared contracts for purchase of, block purchasing of paper, where we get a very, very advantageous price in working with them in bulk, and some other types of things that they provide. So I just want to acknowledge, ABC, they have successfully opened the upstairs room that they were renovating, which has really curtailed programming for them. And they are now returning to very robust booking of their professional development space. And it feels very good to see them turn the corner and their revenues are picking up again. So ABC, I think, is in very good place heading into the spring. I think you're going to see them continue to host some really strong PD for the collaborative. And I think there's good things ahead for them. I will be rotating off. I'm currently vice chair there. And they will have the new superintendent folded in to serve for Westboro. I would also speak about the Accept third quarter report, which I also shared with you. And it's interesting to see the differences, how they present their information. I would want to track Accept for a while and pay attention because, you know, I feel like you know Aspet Valley Collaborative after all these years. Accept is new. They're going to offer different things. You'll probably hear Daniel bringing forward some of the stuff that they're doing because I think they're providing some really good programming for students with special needs who need some special additional supports at times, as well as programs and good PD. So the job alikes there are really well attended by some of our staff. Sherri attends our job alike. So some good things ahead. So I guess I would ask you just to acknowledge that we have seen and received these two reports.
Any questions, comments? Just as a point of information, do the collaboratives ever offer their comments and considerations to the state legislature for the programs that they operate?
They definitely do the same type of lobby work for interaction with the state legislature for special consideration of grants, support, expansion. The rules for collaboratives are very different, which is really interesting. And so some of the funding sources, like they don't get Chapter 70, like it's different. So those are the types of things where, what they're lobbying for, but they do play a strong role of bringing the voice of multiple districts forward and do play, do play a kind of a political component role for the districts.
That was exactly the reason why I asked that question.
Yeah.
Because obviously, in numbers, we can have an influence relative to school and the programs that the two collaboratives operate.
Yeah. And I, it was interesting because for a while, there's, there's been a move by the state, and it was after Edco failed, the collaborative of Edco failed, that the state was looking like it might try to standardize a lot of the collaborative's practices. And the collaboratives appropriately, at a certain point, pushed back and said, well, that doesn't make us collaboratives, and we're supposed to be independent operational bodies. And they do have unique differences, as well they should. And so they're in partnership with the state, but the state started organizing them. And there was some discussion, it was collaborative, I just want to be on record as saying, but it was brought about a really healthy decision about where they're independent and then how they can have a different voice. So there's, there's like a unique thing about being part of a collaborative that is good for you to understand. So we host our retreat there sometimes. It's a nice spot to go because it's close. And so I encourage you next year to consider an early retreat. And I think Allison and I have already talked about a time, and I should get, confirm it with her and get that to you. But we actually looked at a September retreat time or an early October. I urged her to move it a little closer because with her newness, I think it'd be good for you guys to have some team building and discussion time. So I'm looking at that with her and her transition. And I'll send it to you, Steve, and then we'll share it to the committees. You can kind of lock in the date.
Yeah, I think that would be a good opportunity for us to have, you know, one-on-one discussions with the School Committee members as well as with our new superintendent.
Yep.
And also to get her feeling of how things are going, if you will, in the first weeks, month plus that she's here. So I think that's very good.
Okay. I will work with her on that. Making some notes. Don't let me forget, Daniel.
I will.
All right.
I think with that, our agenda is complete. Any discussions that anybody would like to put on the table before we adjourn? If not, whoever would like to make a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Who's in favor?
So you guys have to enjoy that this was a short meeting because next, next meeting is longer. So prep yourself. Bring a snack and a glass of water. We will have a little bit longer meeting. We'll have two update reports. We don't typically. But one of them would have been tonight, but couldn't be. So I try to keep the meetings so we've got like one. I think we'll, I'll work on shuffling things so it's not too long. But two nice reports coming forward to you, Director Student Service and the Wellness Report. So it'll be a nice, nice evening full of content. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Westboro TV.
Thank you.